I will call to order the City of Milton's Special Common Council Meeting for Tuesday, October 24, 2017 at 5:01 PM. And can I please get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Pigly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Item number two, approval of the agenda.
Aaron?
Yes?
Were you asked for a motion on that? I'd like to make a request.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to request that item four be removed from the agenda due to the fact that content is inappropriate for city council discussion or action.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
There's a motion? Did everybody hear the motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any comment or questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So, you want to have item number four on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Dave, did you get that?
Yep.
Okay. Item number two, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We have an agenda. Item number three, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. And we have one person signed up to speak, Lance Fenna. And then, there's a couple of correspondences that I just want to mention when you're done.
Hello, and thanks for allowing public comment. I'll be talking about item four on the agenda. The school board is asking you to endorse a referendum so they can use City Hall and your reputation in some cheap advertisement, including more propaganda. I feel it is-
Lance, can I just interrupt you for a second? I'm sorry, I was going to say this at the beginning, just to be mindful of, we have three minutes to talk, and to be respectful, and no personal attacks on anyone.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
I think it is inappropriate for the school board to stoop to this level at this time. The city council would not only be endorsing the referendum, you would also be endorsing the methods and tactics that have been used to get to this point. One of those tactics is using kids and the money people donated to those kids to lobby for the school board's agenda. I do not think kids should be exploited in this manner, and I do not think the city council should be exploited either. If this referendum process was executed in a manner that the majority of the voters felt positive about, it would stand on its own without this governing body's endorsement. I urge you to maintain your integrity by staying neutral on this issue. I would also like to comment on the link I emailed the council members. The Racine City Council was being asked to vote on a resolution that would, by its wording, strongly encourage a yes vote. Instead, the approved resolution simply states that the city encourages the school board to enhance the quality of education and the reduction of taxes. So, it comes down to the fact that, just like Racine, we all want our children educated in a fiscally responsible way. And so, I just urge to be neutral, you know, in your decisions. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. There was not anybody else that was signed up to speak. There was two correspondences. I received Lance's late this afternoon, and it was the link to the Racine School Board and the Racine City Council being asked to endorse that. And I believe everybody else on the council got that correspondence. I also received another correspondence, as well as the council did, from Barry Van-
Von Falkenstein.
Von Falkenstein, which didn't really say to endorse or not endorse, but had some issues with some information in a Courier article, the best that I could understand. And I don't know if anybody else wants to comment on it, or anything else. It was quite a long correspondence. Okay, so, item number four, discussion and possible action on the city council's potential endorsement of the 2017 Milton School District referendum.
Larry Lane, the biggest concern I have is, and maybe not even concern, dilemma, let's put it that way. The dilemma I have is that the term endorsement is pretty powerful. When you look it up in the Webster's dictionary, endorsing means you're standing for the issue at hand. You're willing to go full bore for that issue. And, the real question for me is, are we being asked to endorse the concept of a referendum and the process that it entails? Well, then I'd have no trouble saying yes. If we're being asked to tell you what our vote is going to be by November 7, then I have a good problem. Because those are two different issues. The process is the process, and it's a good process. Makes people think about it, discuss it, maybe even agonize over it, but it forces But, to ask me as a council member to tell you how I'm going to vote, I don't think that's appropriate, if that's what the gist of endorsement is. I don't know if that helps, but that's my thoughts.
Anybody else? We can go down the table, we can do it however you want. Well, I'll go back to Dave, so I don't forget him. Dave, did you want to make any comments?
Yeah. And then, I would like to expand on what Larry just said. This issue was put on the referendum, or is a referendum, to provide each and every voter in the district the opportunity to make a personal decision, and have that decision recorded on a secret ballot at the ballot box. And to ask us to commit prior to the election that the six of us are going to vote for or against is inappropriate. That's why I made the motion I did to begin with. The school boards, or, not the school board, the school districts move to try and get us to endorse is totally inappropriate. To use our six voices as leverage to gain more votes is a little underhanded, as far as I'm concerned. The referendum, if it's constructed properly, should be able to stand on its own. But, as I told a person this afternoon who asked me about it, if you want to know right now how I stand, it's none of your business. I have not made up my mind. When I do, that decision won't be recorded at the ballot box where it belongs, not in some statement ahead of time to gain votes. Okay.
Alright, thanks Dave. Teresa, did you want to make a comment?
No. In looking at the procedures, and looking at the city council as a leadership body within the community, when I originally talked about the issue, it seemed as though the city council would act as, you know, a leadership body in directing and looking at the issues that the community face, whether that be deciding where to put sidewalks, and sewers, and different things through public works, or different things that help throughout our community. And, this was another issue that we would face in terms of our community. And so, that it seemed as though another issue that we would discuss as a city council. Is it something that we felt was another part of the community that we would support in meeting the needs of our community? However, in thinking about it and contacting city councils, ten of them throughout southern Wisconsin over the past few days, and finding out how they approach types of procedures, and working with other civic bodies, I found that they felt that it was, they didn't use the word unconstitutional, but felt that it was an inappropriate move across civic bodies. And, there are other ways to show support and respect, and address those issues without showing a formal endorsement, which I'd like to discuss once we get through how other people are feeling.
Thank you, Teresa. Ryan?
I think it's good to support the school district in their efforts, as we are kind of all one community together. I'm still actually making my mind if it's worth, if it's something that we should endorse, or it's more that we should just support. But we are partners who work together closely, quite often. It's good to keep that in mind.
Thank you. Ryan, Jeremy?
The discussion part, that's what we were waiting for, right? I think that we all collectively may have just gotten a little excited. Maybe the people that are proponents, or maybe have flipped lines and become supportive of the improved referendum. We've seen a lot of different things come addressed of what was a closely contested vote. So, you know, there's different avenues, I think, individually as council people that we can take in order to show support for the school district, specifically on the referendum. But, I agree with Teresa, Larry, and Dave on many of their sentiments in regards to representation of all the people in the City of Milton, so.
Thank you. Linda?
Consequences, consequences. Yeah, it happens every time, doesn't it? I think that this is, yeah, it was on just a minute ago. Anyway, I'm not going to hold up the meeting for the mic. I, but, I just, I want to point out to everyone, whether they're sitting in the room, or maybe will be watching this on YouTube. I feel-
Thank you.
This is Jeremy's. I'm of the opinion, and always have been of the opinion as a council member, that when somebody approaches council and says, "What do you think about this? Would you discuss this?" I believe that it's our responsibility to do that, and I am very sincere about that. And, as many of you know, it doesn't really matter to me what the topic is. I was at the municipal conference this week, I spoke with several of my fellow council people, and I raised the question to them, "What did your municipality do, and what, how would you address this?" And I can tell you that the majority of those people pretty much said, "Really? They asked you?" And then said, "No, it's a totally different body. It's a totally different government." And, as much as we all want to be community, and we want to be together and working together, there are some places where we probably should just stay on our own bodies, school board, city council. But however, that being said, I also have spoken to several of the people throughout the community. And, I can tell you that out of all of the people that I have spoken to, some of them are like, "Yeah, I want you to show that you are supporting our school district and the growth of the community." And some of them are like, "No, I'd rather take care of this myself at the ballot." And, so, as a result of that, my, I feel like, as much as I would like to support the school district, and I have tried to work with the school district on different committees and different events throughout the city, I feel like endorsing the referendum is not something that I would be comfortable with doing. But that does not mean that I don't want to work with the school district, because I do. And I think that we can work together on some of the things that will come out of this referendum, because we do all have the community in mind. And let me just say, one of the things that has just really been bugging me in the last few days is the disrespect and the naysaying throughout the community over the school district, or just some petty things. We, all of us, just as we were elected to represent the citizens for the City of Milton, the school board was also elected to represent this, to make sure that the school has everything that they need. And, I feel like the community needs to come together and realize what this situation actually is here. I personally volunteered at Middle East, middle school, East, Northside High School. I was in the PTOs, PTAs, whatever you want to call them now. I worked in the classrooms. I know what these schools look like, and I know the needs of some of these kids. And I just hope that everybody will get away from what has happened in the last six months, and just put the kids in the forefront. And that's all I have to say.
And Teresa, you wanted to talk about something else?
Yes. I think that, you know, as I said, that moving beyond an endorsement in a way to say that we do want to work together, but support each other, that there are other ways to go about that. And so, we talked about creating a statement of support, and, you know, as Linda referred to, talking about ways that we do support one another, and that while it's not an endorsement, it is identifying ways that we do support the district, and what ways we find that the district is, you know, beneficial to the community. Because that's our goal in working with the community. So, I think if we want to talk about some of the ideas that we had begun to write down.
So, we have like a rough draft of some of the supporting statements that council members and city staff had made at the last meeting. And, so we just type them up, and we certainly can read it, or if council members just want to look at it and make statements, or not make statements, it's totally up to you. You have like a rough draft in front of you. So, if anybody would like to make a statement, or if they would just like me to read the comments, I'll just let you all decide.
Why don't you read them?
Okay.
Sure. Okay, I just-
I have my glasses today. Dave, did you hear what we were doing?
No.
Okay, and you're okay with that?
No.
Okay. "The City of Milton Common Council recognizes the School District of Milton is one of the most important assets to our community, both from a quality of life and an economic development standpoint. There can be no doubt that the School District of Milton benefits every resident of the City of Milton on a daily basis through the betterment of our children and our community. To that end, the Milton Common Council supports the School District of Milton's efforts to continually improve the educational experience of our student population, whether it be through advancements in educational initiatives, hiring and retaining quality educators, or maintaining and improving the infrastructure necessary to provide these enriching services. The City of Milton Common Council supports the School District of Milton. Additionally, the City of Milton will continue to look for partnerships with the School District of Milton to improve the educational experience of our students and lessen the burden to our taxpayers. It is our belief the School District of Milton is the City of Milton, and the City of Milton is the School District of Milton. Together we prosper, but separate we will struggle." So, I understand that maybe some members of the school district or the school board, and many citizens may be disappointed that the council didn't come right out and endorse the school district referendum. But what I can tell you unequivocally is that this common council, including myself and including the city staff, cares deeply about the City of Milton, cares deeply about their residents, their children, and about having a successful school district. And, I appreciate the time and the consideration that the council put in to what they were going to talk about. And they didn't have to put it on the agenda. And I can tell you that many, many city councils and mayors would not have done it. They just would have said no. But Linda's correct, that this city council, and me, if you want something on the agenda, we're more than happy to put it on the agenda, and we're more than happy to have a discussion with members of our community. And we encourage participation in our meetings, just like the school district does. So, please continue coming, please continue asking us to have discussions about this, and we want to work with the school district any way we can. And I appreciate everybody coming tonight, and sitting in the audience, and listening to what the council had to say. Thank you for the emails, thank you Lance for coming up and speaking. Yes, Dave?
The last sentence, or the next last sentence in that last paragraph talks about the school district is the city, and the city is the school district. I have a problem with that, they are two different branches of government. There needs to be a statement of cooperative operation, but they are not one and the same.
Sure. Do you feel like your statement, did you want me to talk about it, or do you think that your statement is enough?
Well, I'd just like to see that sentence changed, to show a cooperative experience between the city and the district. They are not one and the same as that sentence states.
Sure. So, as a council, would you like to vote on this general public statement, and change that sentence, or not talk about that sentence, debate that sentence? Just have vote on the public statement, not vote on the public statement? I mean, I've read it, you've asked me to read it, you've all agreed, so it's up to you.
I think that the way that you, that this has been followed up with the explanation, I guess I just don't see that that's a real concern.
Yeah. Recognizing that we're not endorsing this because of the separation of the two bodies indicates that we should probably maybe just strike that line, because the rest of the message is pretty much on point.
I could agree with that.
Okay. So, maybe we should make a motion that be our-
This is the second to the last, right there. It is our-
Miss it.
Well, if-
Just take the sentence out and make a motion that that will be our, be a public statement for us.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Would you just clarify, Madam Mayor, would you clarify that again, just so I understand?
So, everything that I read out loud, minus the, starting with the second to the last line, does that make sense? Okay.
But, shouldn't we keep in, "Together we prosper, separately we struggle" part?
Do you want to keep in that, and just take out the second line?
Yeah, just take out the second sentence.
Okay.
Take out the last sentence, rather.
Okay. Alright.
Is that the motion?
Okay. So, Dave, did you hear what they were saying? Just delete second to the last line, that was read out loud?
The second, second to the last-
Basically, the line that says, "It is our belief the School District of Milton is the City of Milton, and the City of Milton is the School District of Milton." Take out that one sentence, but leave all the rest.
That makes sense.
Okay. Is there a motion?
You will carry it.
Okay, is there a second? Did you, alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries, and that's our public statement. Alright. Item number five, discussion and possible action on ordinance number 437, amending section 2-690 in ordinance number 438, creating section 2-691 of the Code of Ordinances concerning the fire department changes. And for those of you that were at the fire commission meeting, these are the ordinances that Chief Banker had brought up. And maybe Al can expand on this a little bit, because we actually do have to do one more step at the fire commission level, but we talked with our attorney about them.
Right. So, Chief Banker provided, well, actually Jenny provided us with some sample examples of ordinances, that one was adopted in Janesville, and I think the other one was just a general template. In reviewing those with our legal counsel, we prepared ordinance 437 and 438, which addressed those two requests from Chief Banker. 437 basically creates the ability for the fire, for the City of Milton to charge for non-fire related, non-fire related calls. And ordinance 438 then sets out the parameters for what those non-fire related calls would be. And, just so folks are clear, if you read the ordinance, 438 refers to a schedule of charges that must be adopted by the fire commission. So, once the fire commission adopts those, that schedule of charges, then this ordinance would address those. So, the town of Milton would have to adopt one, too, if they so choose. But this allows the City of Milton to charge for non-fire related activities, and then the fire commission to set that schedule of charges as to what those non-fire related activities would be, that would be, would be allowed to be charged for. And this is not uncommon in municipalities, and it is a way for the fire department to recoup some of those costs that are very difficult to recoup, in a very labor-intensive service, and one that is very expensive. Those folks are very highly trained, and so, this is an opportunity to try to recoup some of those costs for those events that are not necessarily fire-related activities, so.
Are there any questions about that?
I have a question. Since that schedule hasn't been placed yet, or developed by the fire commission, then if we wanted to motion on it, we have to motion on it, the idea of not knowing what that schedule looks like.
That is correct. So, one could look at it as the chicken and the egg, but with that being said, it's ultimately the fire commission's authority as to what those fees would be that they would charge for. So, yes, to a certain degree, the council is voting blindly on what those charges would be, but at the end of the day, it's the fire commission's authority. So, even if the list did exist before today's discussion, the city council couldn't say, "Well, I like items 1, 2, 3, and 7, but I don't like items 4, 5, 6, and 8." It would be kind of all or nothing. So, we had a long discussion about that with the attorney, as to can the council adopt this ordinance without that schedule? this ordinance without that schedule of activities? And the answer is yes. But that is certainly up to the council if they feel comfortable with that or not. The other option would be to approve one and not the other or just table both until that schedule of charges is been approved by the Fire Commission. But, you know, those are all options available to you at this time.
They pretty much plan to model it after Janesville's.
I'm sure they do.
So even if I didn't like the schedule, too bad.
Well... I think it would be, I... No, no, and I'm certainly trying not to put words in anybody's mouth, but I think if there was a schedule of fees that you as a council member did not feel comfortable with, you certainly could talk to the other three members of the council who are on the Fire Commission and say, "Hey, you know, I don't like item number nine." But I don't want them to feel like it's, like you're kind of trapped.
I'm just trying to make sure that we're all on the same page with that and I have to answer to the city residents too. They're the ones that are going to pay those fees.
Yeah, and I think the ordinance is more general. The fees would be subject to change year in, year out, to adjust to it. But then, much like the other item that we're going to talk about today, these are just common practices that local communities are using to recoup funding for their operating budget. Our budget is super tight. We hired a new chief who's shown us what other municipalities are doing. We've talked about this at the Fire Commission level, we've talked to experts. It's, both of these assist the city of Milton.
Be misunderstood, I wasn't construing that the commission wasn't doing their job. I just, coming at it from a citizen perspective of, okay, you know, what's that going to be? What's it going to look like?
And then I also just want to encourage you Larry, because you were asking that question, I'm sure that others may have the same question. There is a event at the fire station this week on Thursday, question and answer period, and I would actually encourage not only the council members, and it has been noticed that there might be a quorum of the council there. So I would encourage you to definitely go and talk to Chief Banker. And actually, one of the things that we also need to keep in mind, and the Fire Commission needs to keep in mind, I included, is that this, the litmus test is actually more prevalent in the city as opposed to the township. So that's just something that you, you know, we want to be sure that we can recoup our expenses. So, thank you.
If someone was inclined to make a motion and you wanted to waive the second and third reading, that can be part of your motion also.
And if Inglewood were it, I would go ahead and make the motion.
I will second.
Cannot second before we know what the motion is.
I think the ordinance would be to, or I'm sorry, the motion would be to adopt file ordinance 2017-437 and file ordinance 2017-438, waive the second and third reading and adopt. So moved.
Second.
So are any further questions or comments? Dave, do you have anything?
I just wouldn't like to just add as a side note here, this is something, our fire department situation is something that I have been questioning other municipalities about for the last several years that I have gone to the league conference. And we are not alone. I just, I want you to make sure that, I want to make sure everybody knows that. Everybody in the state is going through these issues with their fire department.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Linda, item number six.
Consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85 per N1, per N C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, re-city administrator annual evaluation.
Second.
There's a motion, a motion and a second to go to closed session. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries.